And we are live, Chair.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the February 28th, 2024 Regular Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I am Mike Murphy, the Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is being brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your mics turned on for the roll call. Deputy Sea Clerk Deva Strata, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chair Murphy.
Present.
Vice Chair Reggup.
Present.
Commissioner Rashis.
Here.
Commissioner Gels.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Here.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Here.
And Commissioner Cuse.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all here. Okay, for this meeting, we will continue to utilize the Zoom platform. I will do my best to recognize you in the order in which your hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then make whatever comments or ask questions that you have. First item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Deputy Sea Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
No, Chair, no one has signed up as of four o'clock this evening.
Wow, shocking, shocking. So now we move on, oh, we move to regular business. Kate, do you have something to say?
Yes, just wanted to state for the record, I have employment-related business at seven o'clock, so we'll need to leave early tonight.
Okay, thanks for giving us heads up. If we're lucky, maybe we'll be done by then. Okay. So, staff has requested to change the order of the agenda to discuss the comp plan update, scope, and schedule prior to discussing the update Park Zone and Climate Action Plan related amendments. They believe this order will be helpful to have prior to delving into the more detailed work. So the first item of regular business is to review and consider in improving the minutes of the January 24 regular meeting and the February 8 special joint meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deb, can you conduct the roll call? Or Chair Reggup, Vice Chair Reggup, do you have a comment on the minutes?
Yeah, quick, quick comment on them. I noticed for both of these that it just listed the one person who spoke at one meeting and the two people who spoke at another. It didn't, when I looked at some earlier ones, like our November 20th meeting, it said, oh, they spoke in support or opposition of this. I was wondering if could add just like a few words, just saying what they, what they talked about, or is that not? Or is that not a proper precedent?
Are you talking about the public appearance speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Deb, what's the protocol on that?
Well, I'm looking at both sets of minutes and in both cases, it identifies who spoke and what they address, or what they addressed the council regarding. In each case, it was the parks zone.
But were not their opinions. I guess that was the question.
So we don't necessarily, we don't what they're saying, if they're speaking in opposition or for, and they weren't speaking in opposition or for something, they were giving your views.
Okay, that clarifies, that clarifies it, thank you. Yeah, because I think I was looking at our docket stuff, which is a lot clearer, you know, for again. So, okay, thank you. That addresses it. No, no more concerns.
Okay, roll call.
All right, let me switch between screens here real quick. Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
Commissioner Rashis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reggup.
Aye.
And Chair Murphy.
Aye. Motion passes. Our second item of regular business is the update, the scheduling, so let's talk about that. Adam, I believe you are the one doing the presentations, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Let me share my screen real quick. I have a just a quick slide deck to walk us through this here tonight. So we wanted to, we wanted to touch on the scope and schedule for the comp plan update at this point in the process, because we are approaching the final sprint to the end, to the finish line here. And it's going to be both a sprint and a marathon, I think. So we wanted to get everybody kind of on the same page and just touch on where we're going in these next couple of months. And, and we have a couple of, you know, things for you to think about that we're going to be reaching out to the commissioners in the next couple of weeks about. And so we wanted to get the wheels turning today so that you have a chance to think about it before staff reaches out in the next couple of weeks. So our scope of work for the comprehensive plan update, just as a refresher, the scope of work was set in 2022, almost exactly two years ago, and it was recently amended this last summer to incorporate some of the additional work that we needed to do for the housing element in light of recent statewide legislation. And really, the, the bulk of that scope of work is just focused on maintaining our comprehensive plan update, or our comprehensive plans' compliance with the Statewide Growth Management Act, or GMA. So most of the amendments that we're making in, we're required to do a periodic update every 10 years under the GMA. And most of, most of the items in our scope of work were really just focused at maintaining that compliance. However, there were a couple of things that were new or over and above the requirements there. That includes the drafting of the economic development element that we were working on this last fall. And then also the housing element is going to require some additional updates, again, because of changes, recent changes in the state law. The most important piece of looking at the scope and looking at these next couple of months is that the, the GMA requires that we finish this update, complete this periodic review by the end of this year, by December 31st. And what that means is, that means the council needs to, the council needs to adopt the updated comprehensive plan language. And it needs to, whatever implementing ordinance we have that does the other code amendment work that's required to implement that to a certain extent, is required to be adopted by that time as well. So we're, we're working within, within the confines of this year, looking ahead. So part of that scope of work included some studies, reports, and public participation to gather information to help us make decisions about the comprehensive plan. We've, we've completed most of these projects, the Economic Development Workshop, our Economic Analysis and Housing Needs Assessment, the Land Capacity Analysis and Racially Disparate Impacts Evaluation, those two reports that I presented to the City Council about housing last month, and then some housing public outreach that we just completed this week. And then, so coming up, we, the last piece of this puzzle is the Comprehensive Plan Community Workshop. And that community workshop is, we're planning for it to occur on May 1st or around there. And this will be an in-person event to gather public input on the overall comprehensive plan update. There will probably be some focus on the economic development element and the housing element, because those are the two pieces of the comp plan that are getting the most changes or are the most significant substantial changes from what we had previously. So there will be a focus on those two elements. And, and this will be an in-person event, like I said, and we're probably, we're tentatively planning on holding this at the community center. And our purpose of, of holding this workshop is really to get you to get public input, to provide you with help you make your decision about what you want to recommend to the city council. And so for that reason, we're, we're going to really encourage the planning commissioners to attend that meeting. These are really good opportunities to, as, as folks work through the activities at the workshop, you can engage with them and you get a better kind of sense of the, the public sentiment. I see, I see a hand up.
Oh, quick question. Is this envisioned to be a daytime or an evening event?
Probably, I mean, if it's a weeknight, it would be an evening event.
Okay.
It, it really depends on where we end up scheduling it. They work pretty well to do in the evening, because folks usually can carve out an hour or two to come by and check out what we've got going on.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the, the structure of this workshop is really going to be pointed at whether these proposed amendments are generally on target. We, we try to keep the activities for these types of workshops at a pretty high level so that we can cover the ground and help the, the community understand what we're looking at without getting bogged down in, you know, an and/or an or in a policy statement or something like that. And as I mentioned, this is a really good opportunity for you to engage with the public a little bit more directly. We've intentionally positioned this community workshop at, at, towards the end of your process, but before you hold your public hearing. It's, it's an opportunity in a little bit less of a formal setting for you to, to speak with the public and hear the public's opinion kind of before you're in the formal public hearing, making your final recommendation. And, and as we get a little bit closer, we're asking you to start thinking about what kind of topics would you like to get input on at the workshop? If there's something that's kind of hanging out in one of the drafts, or as we get, as we continue to work through the housing element, we can, we can be a little bit of, a little bit targeted with what we do at the workshop to address those kind of specific lingering questions you might have, or places where you might value the public's input. So as we're working through and working toward this community workshop, if something's jumping out at you as I'd like to get some public input on that, or maybe we can, you know, earmark that for, for the workshop, you know, you can let staff know these next couple of weeks, and that would be really helpful for us. So that's the community workshop and the public engagement that we have lots. We've, we've already touched on most of the elements. The Planning Commission has completed its initial review of five of the six elements that are being that are being amended here. And so those elements that you've already gotten to the public review stage, really, the remaining steps for these are holding that, that community workshop, getting that public input, and then taking and tuning up, we're calling it a tune-up of these elements once we get done with the, the community workshop. And that tune-up is going to be placed between the community workshop and the public hearing on the comprehensive plan update. So that's these elements here. The housing element, as you know, is the the Housing Work Group is going to be finishing up that draft of the housing element and providing a draft to the Planning Commission in, coming up in the next couple of weeks of March. So they're, they're working towards getting that draft together. And then once we have that draft from the work group, then the Planning Commission will have their chance to provide their initial review. And then it all goes through the same process where at the community workshop, we'll get some input. And then you'll have the chance to tune it up in advance of the, of the public hearing. So now, before I get into the schedule, are there any questions on that process for the elements? I don't see any, but we can, oh. I do see one, yeah. Yeah, I.
Okay, um, so I don't see the parks element on the list. Are we going to see the parks element again?
Well, so that's gonna, that's gonna depend on the Parks and Rec Commission's process. So we're, we're going to let them go through the process of review. And we don't want to, because we have a hard deadline from the state. If we need to, we can, we can do the rest of the comprehensive plan update and then come back to that piece if we need to. So that's.
You mean like next, you mean like next year after the deadline, or?
Right, or it's, it's not necessarily something that we have to do to maintain GMA compliance today. And so we don't want to delay the things that we have to do for that optional other piece. And that'll give the, the Parks and Rec Commission the opportunity to do a full exhaustive review through their process without being subject to that GMA deadline.
So maybe I would just add one more question. Is it for sure something that the Planning Commission is at some point going to see again before it goes to the council?
Yes, any change to the comprehensive plan or code has to be accompanied by a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving to the, this is the, the meat of the presentation here, our upcoming schedule. So here we are on the cusp of March. On the 28th, we're planning on having two meetings in the second half of March where the Planning Commission will begin its review of the housing element. Again, once the Housing Work Group has provided their initial draft. And we're planning on doing a, a similar process as we did with the Economic Development Element, where we do, we give you the draft and we give you an overview of the draft and then follow that up at the, at the following meeting with more comments that you may have. So that, that's at the latter half of March. Tentatively, I should say, all of the, the scheduling has a pretty big asterisk with it in that we do have we have a lot to get through and the schedule will probably be a little bit more dynamic than this, yeah. I see a hand up there.
Thanks. Adam, this might be a question more for Chair Murphy or someone in administration, but for future meetings, like I think I saw a note that suggests that we might be moving to in-person meetings, which is great, and I'm supportive. But for, are we going to get a really advanced notice of when we move in that direction? Just because I can tell that we have a lot of meetings coming up. And I want to make sure I can attend, and will I be able to attend if I'm remote, for example, like if I have work travel or whatever else. I'm, I'm just kind of checking in as I look at this.
Yes, I think there's, there's a lot of details to be ironed out for a potential hybrid or in-person meeting. And we would want to give you plenty of advanced notice. I think it's likely that if we did go to having in-person meetings, that there would be some kind of hybrid option for those folks that are.
We will definitely be maintaining a hybrid option when we go back to in-person, if and when we go back into in-person, because we know people need that flexibility from time to time. So I keep that, keep that available.
Yeah, thanks, Allison.
Yeah, I was planning on, over the next week or so, talking to everyone individually about their views on that. So you'll be hearing from me.
And Commissioner Gels, I see your hand up there, too.
Do you have any information about April, or, you know, it'd be nice for me just to get things on the calendar. Spring is, is upon us.
Yes, thank you. That's a nice segue to my next slide.
Ah.
April. So we are planning on holding two meetings in the middle of April there. And these are the meetings, these two meetings are our chance to finish the review of the housing element and make sure that we're ready for that community workshop that we're planning in May. There, it's, it's important to note that here, our deadline really is the community workshop. We need to get, and we'll cover this when we get to May, but we'll need to be to a point where, by the end of April, where we're prepared to go to that community workshop. And so that's where that second goal that I've listed here comes in, and that we, we need to get through that. So two meetings should be enough to get through it, but if we need we need to make that deadline to stay on our schedule. The other thing, just as a food for thought item here, is that April 10th is the Mercer Island Schools spring break. So we don't need to touch on it in the meeting here, but if you're planning on that being a conflict, you know, you can reach out to staff and let us know. We, we want to make sure that we maintain a quorum through the, through the process, so.
And 24th, 24th is not going to be a meeting. It's a regular meeting time, but we're going to do a meeting then.
Currently with this, with this tentative schedule, yes. These are, these are the dates that we were planning on holding the meeting. And that would give us, that would also give us some time for the for getting prepared for the workshop.
I just wanted to say, these like exact dates are still a little in flux. This is what we're currently thinking, but it could change. So I mean, feel free to pencil these under your calendar, but don't put it in, you know, Sharpie permanent ink yet, because things are still moving a bit. And like Adam was saying earlier about the park zone, we're kind of waiting to see what happens with that. If we need to insert that here somewhere, if they finish up, we'll, we'll do that. If they don't finish up, then we'll deal with that separately at a later date. So I think, you know, pencil is where we're at right now with these dates.
And keeping us, keeping staff up to date of kind of where conflicts might be would also, is also going to be really helpful, I think. Maintaining good communication about the schedule as we move forward. So that actually brings us to May, and May is where we have our first. I'm, I'm calling it a milestone. It's also kind of a deadline, but that community workshop to maintain our schedule, we really need to make sure that that's that we've completed the community workshop by before that meeting planned for May 8th. And that's to give us enough time so that we can have those follow-up tune-up meetings and really get to where we're prepared for the public hearing. So that that community workshop that we're penciling in for the first is really our first, like hard, kind of hard and fast deadline there. And that leads us into our, our next deadline in June. But as we're looking at May, another food for thought here is we have, we do have some flexibility in this section, and so we're, we'll be reaching out at some point to poll the commission about whether there's interest in you know, keeping these evening meetings on Wednesdays, or if there's an interest in maybe doing a few longer meetings during the day to try, or late afternoon sometime to try and knock out more, more content per meeting with the idea that that might cut down on some of those meetings. So we'll be, we'll be reaching out about the schedule in that regard, because that, that might be a strategy so that we're not we're not taking up all of your Wednesdays in May. But the reason that we're scheduling these kind of back-to-back like this is that throughout, throughout the month of May, we have the, we have the tune-up in response to the community workshop. We'll have the internal consistency review completed by then, so that, that'll show us, you know, how all of the comprehensive plan elements all fit together. And then we'll need to make sure that everything is really, really put together in a way that we can hold the public hearing at the beginning of June to give you enough time for, for your deliberations. And that brings us to the next milestone, or it's also a deadline. June 5th, we're planning to hold the public hearing there. This is part of why we have to be pretty firm with a public hearing, is that we have to give a 30-day notice for a public hearing, so we have to know pretty far in advance when we have a, a public hearing scheduled. Also, to stay on schedule and give you enough time to have deliberations for a meeting or two following the public hearing. We need to, we need to make sure that that falls at the beginning of June. So we're planning that public hearing on June 5th. Then we have some meetings planned between June 5th and June 26th to complete your deliberations. And our target is, our, our deadline here is to complete the Planning Commission recommendation by the 26th of June. So having that, and that's to, to stay on schedule to get to the council in time for them to consider all this material. And so what that really means is that if we need to have a couple of extra meetings between the 5th and the 26th, we'll need to, we'll need to be prepared to, to hold those meetings. Ideally, by the time we've done the community workshop and the tune-up, the deliberations should be a little easier. So hopefully, we don't have to spend as much time at that stage, but we, we, we need to stick to that June 26th deadline. And then, as we're, as we're looking at the month of June, if we need that third meeting or the third week, we'll need to find a different day than June 19th, because that is a holiday here at the city. So we can't have a meeting that day. So all of this is working towards that, getting the Planning Commission recommendation by June 26th. And that is so that we can take your draft, your recommended draft of the comprehensive plan update to the City Council matter before its July 17th meeting. So we're, we're working to, we want to get the recommended draft to the City Council prior to the legislative recess in August. So that'll give them enough time to to consider adoption and do their review before the end of the year. Because again, the City Council hasn't seen a lot of the work that you've been doing, or hasn't seen the drafts yet. So they'll, they'll have some time for review there. So that's the schedule, and that's the scope check-in. It's a lot of information to digest. But here, I would turn it over to any questions, if you have, if you need any more information here.
Chris?
I mean, you know, I think there's probably not much to do about it at this point. It just feels awfully backloaded and, you know, it surely would have been nice if we got in the housing element, you know, a month or two earlier. But, you know, it seems like this point, there's nothing to do but to, to live with it, I assume. It just seems like we're really kind of crammy at the end. And I'm not sure it's going to be the best deliberative process for all of us.
Carolyn?
Um, you know, when you asked us, Adam, if we had any anything we wanted public input on, I was sort of thinking back, it's so long since I've looked at things like you know, the transportation element, or the utilities element, or the economic element, so on. So I, I, I have no idea, but are you, are you going to ask us to, are you going to send us an email asking us, or should we just figure that over the next couple of weeks, if we happen to think of something, you know, send it in, although I can't figure out where I'm going to dredge that out unless I go through everything all over again, but that's just one, how that works.
I mean, we have, we'll be looking at a lot of information in the next month and a half, or two months in advance of that workshop. So I the intent is that as we work through the housing element, which is really where we're going to have a significant amount of work left that we can, we can pull out those things that the Planning Commission wants review or public input on specifically for the housing element as we do that review. I think in the interim, if there's something that's hanging out from one of those other elements, I mean, I could I think I could save you some time and say the utilities element and capital facilities element are, aren't really getting that big of a change. And so you, you may not need to read through those line by line, but that would be something where, I don't think we're going to have meeting time to go through those. Yeah.
I guess I, I think what might be helpful for me is if we just got an email with you know, a link to, here's the, here's the draft X element and so on and so on, so I can just conveniently just click on them and have a quick look through and see if anything triggers a memory as to something we were going to ask the public about a little bit more, or hope for input about. So that, that would help. But do you, you really need this within the next two weeks? Or can we kind of continue to say, hey, that would be a great thing to hear about at, on May 1st, a little bit longer than the next two weeks?
Yeah, no, for sure. I think up until the end of April. So, so we'll have four, probably at least four more planning commission meetings.
That'll help a lot. Thank you.
Any more questions for Adam? Adam, it might be helpful to circulate that slide deck.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it out there for sure. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for your time.
Helpful to refer back to and set our schedule and remind ourselves of what we've done over the past year.
All right. Well, that's, that concludes my portion. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Next item of regular business is the planning commission agenda bill, 2403, comp plan updates, park zone, climate action plan related amendments. And welcome Allison.
Hello.
You have a presentation for us.
Yeah, I do have a short presentation. Give me just a moment. Bringing that up. Okay. So I've attempted to kind of more closely parse the analysis between the climate action plan and the comp plan here. I saw just before the meeting Carolyn had done kind of a similar exercise and probably has some notes about that as well. So I just wanted to say Carolyn, feel free to pop in here if you noticed climate action, actions that align with some of the policies we're talking about that I may have missed. I think actually probably you and maybe Chris as well know the comp plan better than I, or the climate action plan better than I do, because I know that you're very involved when that was being developed. And I was at points along the way, but probably not quite as deeply as you were. So I've done my best here to, to pull those references in and hopefully, hopefully I got them all. All right. I don't know if I can make it advance. All right. So what I'm hoping to do today is just go through that review of the existing climate-related land use element goals and policies and the climate action plan, goals, strategies and actions. And, you know, kind of compare and contrast how those align. Get your initial feedback on how to incorporate that into the land use element, you know, which things we might want to remove that are there now, which things we might want to keep. If there's other things we need to edit or add. Just want to get your kind of initial thoughts on that. We can, we'll be bringing this back at a later meeting. I think I'll take the feedback you gave me tonight, develop a draft amendment, and then we can look at that at one of the meetings in March. Also looking for some input on where this should live. Should it continue to be in the land use element as it is now? Should we create a separate climate element? I'll talk about that a little more at the end and kind of where this is going longer term and kind of the pros and cons of those options. I don't think there's a clear, better way of doing it. So we can talk about that at the end. All right. I'm going to dive into the comp plan here. I've kind of broken it out by the goals within the comp plan that have to do with climate. So again, I'm just focusing right on those ones that were compiled in one of the exhibits for tonight. The first one is green building and, you know, there's a fairly detailed section here about what we're hoping to achieve with green building. It lists out a bunch of the different standards and programs related to that. And then we've got five policies about how we should be going about promoting green building. Looking at the climate action plan, then there is a whole section of the climate action plan that's focused on buildings and energy. However, a lot of it is focused more specifically on energy sources and energy efficiency. Think this BE 2.2 is really the only action that's specifically about green building. And it's a bit more general. It just talks about promoting green building for residential and commercial projects. Educational outreach. So isn't as specific about like metrics or specifically how we would promote that or having code or requirements related to green building. Okay. I'll pause for questions. Carolyn?
I just want to point out that the, the green building section is a little bit, it's almost an outlier in regards to all of the other comp plan policies for climate. It was adopted at a different time. And I noticed, like you've said, that the policies in the comp plan are really quite detailed. But, you know, perhaps as you say, more detailed than what's in the climate action plan, but typically all of the other climate policies that were adopted in the land use element and the, and in the capital facilities element about, I don't know, I'm guessing like three, four years ago. They're all quite, you know, they're one-liners, you know, they're one-liners and they end up being expressed in great detail in the climate action plan. So it's sort of the opposite of the way the green building is playing out. So it's possible there's a extra verbiage in the green building. I really don't know. I'm not as familiar with the green building section of the complaint, but thank you. So I wanted to just add that.
Yeah, I agree with your comments. I think that's right on. Commissioner Riesch?
Yeah. Can you just tell me what the icons mean?
Okay. Trying to remember the clock is like things that can be done near term. The thumbs up were ones that had broad community support from the survey they did. And I think the like hand-holding one is stuff that we could do with partners. So like this one's talking about partnering with PSE.
And then if you could go back a slide. On 21.2, can you just give a few examples of what, what an incentive would look like?
So some cities offer expedited permit review or reduce permit fees for green building projects. Those would be examples.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so maybe how we should do this is I'll go through the rest of the comp plan policies and then we can have a bigger discussion about how we would like to deal with each of them and keep it, get rid of it, change it, whatever. And I, like I said, I'm not expecting a final answer here, but I think if people have initial feelings or thoughts on that, I'd love to hear it. And then I'll take that into account when I draft something to look at later. Carolyn?
Yeah. So, so if I understand correctly, the process you're proposing that we follow at this point is go through the city's comprehensive plan policies right now in relation to climate. And take kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down as to whether it should stay or not.
Yeah, I think I was going to go through them all first. So we have the lay of the land and then we can talk about them either section by section or in groups. And yeah, I don't know if we need a thumbs up, thumbs down, or if there might be more specific feedback on some of these green buildings on a good example, but there's others where it's like, we might want to keep this one little policy, but the other stuff's already covered in the climate action plan and we can get rid of it.
Ah, well, I would like to suggest a different process, Allison, rather than doing that particular thing. So, you know, the comp plan and the climate action plan are really quite different tools. So the comprehensive plan, you know, is a sort of a formal structure and, you know, has a, a purpose, a formal purpose, and it, you know, has goals and policies in it, which are, you know, by necessity rather broad and they, they don't describe exactly what you're going to do, but they describe the nature of what should be done. But the climate action plan, you know, is a, is a functional plan and it's adopted, it includes the strategies and actions for doing what is in the, the comp plan. So our consultants for the climate plan, they carefully considered the policies that are in the comp plan to make sure that was what was in the climate plan, you know, carries those policies out. I followed that carefully during the development of the draft plan and concurred that all of the policies, which, you know, are, are good, are being actually put into action in the climate plan. I didn't find any that are inappropriate. You know, they're, they're general, but then that's what they're supposed to be. So I think it would be better to determine if the policies that are in the comp plan are indeed matched by actions in the climate plan. However, it's not a problem if there's a policy in a comprehensive plan that is not expressed in a functional plan. You know, that functional plan can be updated in a few years. So I don't think, I think our criteria for deciding what should remain in the comp plan is not, you know, whether it's repeated in the climate plan. Yes, indeed, it is repeated, but it's repeated in a different way. I, you know, I've, I've, I think I sent to you my, you know, kind of comparison I was doing. So for example, if you take one policy from the comp plan, you know, I, I looked and found like 10 or, you know, eight or 10 actions that match the policy. But they don't restate the policy because they don't mean to. They're being, they're being actions. They're not being policies. So I don't think we should just be looking for, you know, duplication and then, you know, deleting policies in the comp plan.
Okay. Thanks for that feedback. I think I think I mostly agree with you. However, I think, you know, like you were saying, the comp plan is intended to be high-level policy direction. And the climate action plan is intended to be an implementation strategy with actions that the city will take, more concrete actions the city will take. And right now there is some overlap where things in the comp plan are more like an action or in some cases they're almost exactly the same as the actions in the comp plan. And so I would argue that those are duplicative and more detailed than what needs to be in the comp plan. But we'll see that when we go through, so probably we can talk about this more once I go through everything and, you know, everybody's had a chance to look at what we're talking about. So I'm going to move ahead to the next, whoops, wrong direction. Next topic here. So I left this one in. I think it's tangentially related to climate disaster planning and recovery. This, I believe this section actually needs to stay in the comp plan, probably pretty much as it is, because it provides the policy guidance for our overall emergency preparedness and planning program, which, you know, citywide and applies to all kinds of emergencies from COVID-19 to the big one earthquake and also climate-related things like flooding or heat events or smoke events or what have you. So I think kind of like Carolyn was just saying, this gives us the high-level guidance for how we're going to plan for emergencies in general and in prepare. And then in the climate action plan, there's this community resilience section that speaks more specifically to actions we can take to plan and prepare for climate-related emergencies. And I think, you know, it's a good example of that relationship of how you need the high level and then you need the more specific actions. So in this case, I think my recommendation would be to leave it pretty much as it is. I don't see a problem with having these both here. I just wanted to include it because I do think there's overlap here with the climate action plan. Next is this high-level goal, goal 27, develop and implement climate action plan. We had drafted earlier last year this reference to the climate action plan being hereby adopted by reference. I think I would suggest adding to this the most recent version of climate action plan. So that's a more dynamic reference that would, you know, if the climate action plan's updated, it would automatically be referred to by the, that sentence. This doesn't have anything analogous in the climate action plan. It, it's literally just adopting and calling for and adopting the, the plan. Okay, this next section, goal 26, is pretty wide-ranging. It's reduce community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. And then each of these policies goes into some different areas. The first four relate to the area of the climate action plan that is community-wide and municipal actions. I'm going to show those on the next slide in a second. And I think there's pretty good concurrence between these, but some of them are almost directly repeated. So like there's two mentions here of working with the King County Climate Collaborative, partnering with King County, Climate Corp, K4C is the acronym for it. And then providing public information, having all of this data available. And then prioritizing actions to reduce emissions. So I think, like, here is the action that talks about having the data available. Continue to maintain a publicly available dashboard that tracks and reports cap and greenhouse gas reduction progress. This is the one about decision-making. Apply a climate lens to city decision-making. I think these map pretty darn closely to what is, what's in the comp plan. Like it's pretty duplicative. And then this one here, CC 1.2 talks about partnerships. It does not specifically call out K4C. It's a little bit more general. I think that was done intentionally since sometimes these things can morph into new names or different configurations. And they didn't want to have it, you know, specifically calling out that one entity. So just popping back up, I think these first four are pretty well-covered in the climate action plan. That would be my opinion. I mean, I see Carolyn raising her hand. I'll let her comment on that before we move on to the next few policies.
Okay. Well, I would say policies 26.1 through 26.4. This is just a perfect example of policies that seem to work out quite well, because when the functional plan was developed, the functional plan meets the policies. So the idea that we would want to maybe, I'm not sure, maybe you're thinking, maybe we don't need these policies because the actions in the climate plan match them. I would say that's the very reason we need to keep these policies to continue to keep our approach integrated as we move forward and update our climate plan to continue to meet these policies. If we ever feel we need to change a policy because it's wrong, then I would agree with, with removing it. I would like to add that, for example, comp plan policy 26.1, I, you know, agree with you. I found also a action in the climate plan that matches that very well. It's quite different. It focuses on the data gathering and the reporting of the data, which is a very key and unique and separate aspect of the climate plan. 26.2, the partnering, that has to do with doing stuff. I mean, yes, you do report your data to them, but the partnering is on, I went ahead and found one, two, three, four, five actions under buildings and energy that have to do with partnering with other cities. And we do develop these actions that we do with other communities, kind of like kill two birds with one stone instead of one community figuring out how to do X and then the next community independently doing that. In K4C, they work together on these strategies, whether it be vehicle charging or, you know, education or working together to advocate at the state legislature. You know, that's what 26.2 is about. And I found, as I said, five things under buildings and energy, two things under transportation. I could have found more. I found, oh, no, I found, let's see, yeah. Two things under cross-cutting and municipal and four things and could have kept going under buildings, buildings and energy. So there's a whole bunch of partnering going on with K4C on, on doing stuff. 26.3. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I got myself a little mixed up here. 26.3 is the one that I found two items under cross-cutting and four items under building. uh, cross-cutting and four items under buildings, building and energy. Twenty six point four, you know, um, it's that's, that's a really important policy to keep. Evaluate and prioritize actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The Climate Action Plan is that evaluation. And in terms of prioritizing, it has an implementation plan in it that's thirty one pages long. So we are meeting policy twenty six point four and it's, you know, it's a good policy. I think we should keep it. So anyway, I, I will, you know, advocate for keeping goals and policies and being happy as a clam when you see them reflected in actions in the climate plan.
Okay, I guess my feeling is that if we're going to keep some of this, it maybe needs to be at a bit of a higher level because right now some of these are almost identical to actions in the Climate Action Plan. And if we're going to have kind of the two levels of information where the comp plan is high level and the Climate Action Plan is specific, they shouldn't have things that are identical in them.
Uh, Allison, let me, let me interrupt for a minute. Um. What I'm hearing from Carolyn and, and I spent time yesterday and today going through the Climate Action Plan and, and the comp plan. And I, I agree that there are a number of overlaps, but um, I'm not sure if the highest and best use of the commission's time is to try and interpolate between these two documents and try to make them perfectly consistent uh, and avoid any overlaps. It seems to me that what given our agenda and where the state of these documents are and which one being more recent and which one being in, going to be updated further in the future is to start by moving the climate-related goals and policies in the comp plan to a new climate element, which is one of the things that you had recommended in the memo. Uh, and then include in that the dynamic reference to the Climate Action Plan. And then have staff um, look at the the um, the, the goals and policies that are there. If there are ones that need to be updated, for example, if there's a reference wrong or, or something wrong, or if the commission thinks or commissioners think that there's there is a major gap or flaw in the comp plan goals and policies, then those are the things we should look at. But I'm not sure if it's it really an efficient use of the commission's time to try to edit the comp plan parts to strictly conform to the cap or vice versa. Um, well, of course, we're not going to edit the cap at this point. Um, but I just feel that it's almost um, like busy work as a work, you know, and given our agenda or our heavy agenda coming up, I'm not sure that's really an efficient use of our time. And I think we could cut through a lot of this by just creating that separate element, put, moving these things over, add the reference. And then if there are specific things that we feel uh, have been left out or could be in there or slightly modified, then we could do that. Um, but I think we're making it maybe harder than it needs to be. I don't know if the other commissioners feel the same way or, you know, so weigh in if you, Angie.
Thanks. Um. I might be struggling to follow everything in some ways. So let me just see if I can repeat some things back. So I understand it and then kind of answer Mike's question. Um, I think I came to the meeting assuming that the city was going to ask us to help guide them on, hey, look, we need to, we're updating the comp plan. Um. We weren't planning to put a climate element in, but we're going to have to. Um, do we need to create gre- greater alignment in our comp plan update by going ahead and creating that uh, climate element now? And if so, should we pull all the, should we pull the climate language from all the other elements? Because right now what I, what I think I understand is our comp plan takes all that climate conversation and it's threaded throughout all the other elements. And now we're faced with a place where we're actually going to put it in its own element. So if the question is, do we just do that now, even though it probably won't be consistent with some state law with a forenumbered that I don't remember, but like, I feel like the question is, do we reorganize ourselves in this way now? Do we wait to do it later? Um, but not so much that we were editing those elements. Is that a semi-accurate understanding of what we were initially being asked?
Yeah, so it's eleven eighty one, HB eleven eighty one requires us to create a climate element by twenty twenty nine. There's a little flexibility there. It actually says either you can have a standalone element or you can have components and other elements that also meet these requirements. Um, and then there's some specific things we have to include, like strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, vehicle miles traveled. And we have to have a resilient strategy for adapting to the impacts of climate change. Um, so there's a lot more details on everything that's required. I haven't gotten into those yet. We just haven't had time. Um. You know, we're going to have to do all that in four to five years. I think the decision point now doesn't have to be our final decision because obviously a lot could change in that time. But like you said, I think we have the opportunity to pull this into a separate element now if we want to. We also could leave it kind of dispersed. I think there's pros and cons to both of those. I think, you know, in some ways, there's some simplicity in having everything in one place, right? Like all the climate strategies, policies, goals in one element can be simpler, but I think there's also an advantage to the dispersed model in that each element kind of maps to different components of city operations. Like land use and housing are things that community planning and development deal with day to day. Utilities and capital facilities are things that public works deal with every day. Um, transportation also. Um, and so the dispersed model can put, you know, the goals and policies related to those work areas in a place that maybe aligns better with the staff who need to see it when they're evaluating projects or potential projects and uh, you know, making capital planning decisions and prioritization decisions and that kind of thing. Um. So I really see it as it could work either way and there there's kind of pros and cons to both of them. I don't see a clear like, oh, this way is absolutely better. Um.
Okay.
Why I didn't give a strong recommendation on that.
I think I want to take that part of the conversation and put a pin in it for uh, later deliberations with the commission. My follow-up question then, just so I make sure I'm clear about the asks then is, um. What I think I hear Carolyn pointing to and then what you're responding to, Allison, is there's some redundancy between the comp plan and then the follow-up plans. And there's some conversation about, um, let's call it cleaning up that redundancy. And I can land in any number of seats around the tables around something like that. But I have a question to you, Allison. What is the, what is the con to, to having redundancy? That you can see or that the city has already encountered to date?
Um, I think pure redundancy doesn't have a negative impact necessarily. But when there's things that are similar, like mostly the same, but not exactly the same, I think that's where it could get us into trouble because they're not consistent. And, you know, when we adopt the Climate Action Plan as part of the comp plan, then everything needs to be internally consistent. So all the elements of the comp plan and these other implementation strategies that are adopted in the comp plan need to be consistent. You can't have anything that doesn't align or like the, the goals and policies have to be supported by the actions and vice versa. So if there's things that are a little bit going in different directions or possibly, you know, not supporting each other, then that can be a problem. Um. And I guess, like, kind of as a best practice, what I'm trying to do is have the high-level policy guidance in the comp plan and then the specific strategies and actions, the things we're going to do per se in those implementation plans and have the, try to keep the comp plan at a bit of a higher level and not talk about like very specific actions that we would take.
Okay, thank you. I'm done asking questions.
Yeah. Um, I guess on, on the topic of new element versus dispersed, yeah, I thought that was one of the questions we'd be asked today. I would, I would definitely advocate for that dispersed model. Um, you know, because like, let's say I'm, I want to understand what the city's doing with utilities. Um, and it's, I think that's how most people are going to approach looking at the comp plan. They're gonna say, okay, let me learn about utilities. Oh, I'm doing utilities and then, oh, I still need, I need to go to this. Um, this other section two to see if, oh, we're going to encourage undergrounding of electrical lines or such. Or I'm going to go to transportation. I'll see nothing about green and then I have, you know. So I think from, just from usability of the comp plan, I think the dispersed model would be preferable and it, it also helps with the digestion of all of those goals, right? You know, and it, it helps sh- show that that's really integrated into the plan versus being a separate piece of planning. So you can look at it, you can go look at one part of it versus having to look at two. And you're breaking out utility goals from green utility goals. So yeah, I'll advocate for that dispersed model when asked. I'm still wondering if that's the ask for today or later.
Carolyn.
Um, I got to thinking about the dispersed model versus the climate element model when I realized that in our analysis here for our task, we were not looking at five or six really important climate policies that are in the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. And you know, that made me realize, oh, yeah. You know, there's, our climate policies are not living in one element, you know. So then, um, and this ca- made me, you know, come to the conclusion uh, uh, that the dispersed element or the dispersed um, method of having climate policy within the elements to which they pertain. Um, I think is, is really valuable because as we look for guidance under, you know, transportation or land use or parks, it almost just makes it almost impossible to go to another chapter somewhere and look for the little things that have to do with, you know, your thing. So what I would suggest as a simple way of taking care of this task at this time in twenty twenty four for our update is um, recognize that our Climate Action Plan right now is, is our Mercer Islands gold standard for climate right now, just like the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan, you know, is, is the gold standard. Um, we don't have to have, you know, a climate element that meets state law until twenty twenty nine. We have plenty of time to look at our Climate Action Plan and check it out to see if it's missing supportive policy in the comp plan. And if it's missing that supportive reporting policy in important places, like in the transportation element or like in the utilities element. I think we should take our, you know, wonderful new product and use it strategically to update, you know, the comp plan, but we don't have to do that for twenty twenty four. I think all we need to do is update or adopt the co- the Climate Action Plan by reference. Um. And, you know, I would avoid putting things in a climate element right now. I think, you know, I think that even long-term that would not be a good idea. I got a feeling that the State Department of Commerce will probably accept Mercer Island's approach if we were to continue to follow a dispersed model just by, um, uh, you know, ensuring that we tell them we're doing what they're asking us to do and that we always have this adopted climate plan adopted by reference. Um, regarding uh, Angie's question about redundancy, uh, I don't think it's too much of a problem if we have some redundancy there. We, it is a problem if we have conflict. And I'm looking for that conflict right now. I'm kind of doing a, a comparison back and forth and, you know, I haven't found any yet, but um. So, uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, forge ahead, Allison.
Okay, um. All right, I'm going to pick back up here with twenty six point five. Encourage the reduction of emissions from passenger vehicles through the development of zero or low greenhouse gas emitting transportation options and by reducing single occupancy vehicle trips. And I just wanted to refer to the transportation um, strategies in the cap here. I don't have them on a slide because they're quite long and they just weren't going to fit. Um, but both the strategy and actions under TR one and TR two um, have a lot of detail about this. Um. Like more specific ways to promote EV infrastructure and the use of EVs and also about looking at ways to reduce trips by encouraging transit and things like that. Um, so I mean, this one might be an example of where we have kind of the higher level statement here and then we've got the specific strategies in the cap. Carolyn.
Yeah, if we, you know, if we take that policy as a very high-level statement that it was meant to be, yeah, I found one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and I sort of quit looking because I had so many actions in the climate plan that meet twenty six point five. For example, in taking actions to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there about that. So anyway, I, I think it's a great, um, it's an example of a great high-level statement with a whole bunch of action that deals with it in the, in the climate plan.
Okay. Um, and then twenty six point six starts off with a really high level, promote an energy-efficient built environment. And then it's got four specific um, sub-policies. So the first one, focused development where utility and transportation investments have been made. I put a star here just to remind me to talk about this one because I don't actually think that there's any actions in the Climate Action Plan that relate to this, which is interesting. Um, and I mean, this is very closely aligned with the land use element. It's talking about where new development should be in relation, in relation to infrastructure. Um, so that's exactly the kind of thing that the land use element is designed to talk about. So yeah, just wanted to kind of highlight that one as one that might be important to keep here somewhere, whether it's in this exact, you know, goal or somewhere else, but um, it's probably kind of an important piece. And then the other three here do have an analogous piece in the cu- in the Climate Action Plan. So twenty six point six point two, promoting the use of renewable and zero and low GHG emitting Energy Sources. Um, that's basically the Building and Energy Strategy One. That's, that's what that is. It's about reducing greenhouse gases in buildings. Um, and so it talks about a whole series of ways that people can reduce fossil fuel use, reduce or eliminate fossil fuel use in their house. Um. And in commercial buildings as well. So I think this is another one where there's a high-level strategy here and then there's a whole bunch of details in the cap. Um, for twenty six, oh, sorry, Victor.
Wanted to go back to twenty six point six point one for a sec. I've read that sentence five times and honestly, I, I, I can't understand what that sentence is saying. Um, maybe, maybe it's just, um, I'm just, I'm having a slow night. But no, number one, it says focusing development. So I'd ask what kind of development? And then it says where utility and transportation investments have been made. What kind of utility and transportation investments are we talking about? We're on an island. And so presumably. presumably there are utility and transportation investments that have been made across this island. So I'm, and again, apologies if I'm just being a little bit slow on this, but.
I mean, I agree, it's pretty broadly worded, should we say? Um, the way I interpret it and hopefully that's what was intended, but um, so focusing development. I think this could apply to residential or commercial development, but, but new development in general. Where utility and transportation investments have been made. So to me, that means where we have invested in capacity for transportation and utilities. And like an example of this is you know, we're talking about needing to add additional higher density capacity to meet our affordable housing targets. And so Adam has done some analysis um, to look at where, where should that be added? Should it be added in town center? Should it be added in the commercial office zones? Should it be added somewhere else? And part of that analysis was just looking at, well, if we change the development regulations in X, Y, Z way, how many units could that produce? But we also looked at, you know, what infrastructure is there? Like what is the current performance of the intersections in that area? Are there already traffic problems or not? And what does our sewer and water infrastructure look like there? Is there additional sewer capacity if we were to drop eight hundred more units into this area? Or would we have to upgrade the sewer system? So we haven't done a detailed analysis on that yet, but we've had conversations with our staff and public works and some of our um, transportation consultants to get kind of the initial read on. Like, is this definitely a problem or is it probably okay? Um.
I guess, I guess the feedback that I would give you is if you're kind of interpreting and, but you're not quite sure and I'm reading it and I don't have no idea what.
I think you're right. It could be clearer. It could, you know, that's something we can do here is try to get that to be more specific and direct.
Tighten that up in terms of what's actually intended here.
Mm-hmm. All right. Um, I think you are next, Chair Wriggum. First, my chair, sorry.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, this was the one where I scratched my head too, just like Victor. Um, I'd say, yeah, and so my understanding is we get to tighten this up again when we re-review land use or are we? I'm, I'm still apologies to, I'm still a little unclear about today's goals. Um, but my concern here specifically um, from our uh, public feedback and our previous experience with the park zone is uh, you know, Mike, yeah, I said, I, I get concerned when I see focusing development where utility investments exist, right? Cause you know, that, that's to me, sounds like encouraging utility corridors, right? We've got one large wireless communication facility. Oh, well, let's build another one there. Let's, let's put more, you know, that's, that's my concern too. And then as we were talking earlier about consistency um, or inconsistency with other elements, this could pose a problem. But yeah, I think, I think you, you can explain it is, it is pretty pretty broad and vague. So I think, yeah, I'll, I'll second the, let's tighten this one up because it can be interpreted in a multitude of ways that some of which concern me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, but you know, I don't want someone to see this and say, oh, hey, we should put four more large wireless communication facilities in Island Crest Park.
Yeah, we don't want.
One already.
We don't want a cell phone company using this to make the case for.
Exactly.
Towers or something.
Cause I, I will say, having had prior experience with this in, you know, before I moved to the Pacific Northwest. Um, utility corridors are a big, uh, were a big issue. Um, you put, you put up one power line and then almost immediately before the grass has grown, there are already applications to put up a second or a third, um, because, oh, well, we've got a, we've got an established corridor here. So let's focus our utility development on this. So yeah, just wanted to throw that, throw that out there and second Victor's um, comment.
Carolyn.
I like hearing the comments people have on this particular policy that Victor and, and Adam were just commenting on. Because I was there in this discussion and remember how it went, you know, when I look at it, I tend to think of, oh yeah, I know what, I know what we meant. But you know, it doesn't really say so much necessarily what we meant, but I, I do agree with Allison's interpretation of what was meant. Um, but you have to remember that four or five years ago, when we were working on this, the state legislature had not yet weighed in on starting to say you gotta have more density. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. Um, but we were thinking transit oriented development. You know, we were thinking, uh, how do you get to save on greenhouse gas emissions? If you could get some more dense uh, residential development, multifamily, where the transportation is, the high capacity transit, that's, that's a good thing. But we were advised at the time, that's too specific. You know, don't, you need to say something more general. So we ended up saying something that's probably just plain old confusing and doesn't say much. But yeah, I think it'd be great to update that if we can, but I do wonder, Allison, given that transportation oriented development, that legislation has died in the legislature here this week. Um, do we really have? Uh, I mean, with all the work we're doing on housing, are we doing something called transportation oriented development? And is the housing element we're working on likely to give us some guidance on what this policy should say?
Big question. Um, I mean, our town center is transit oriented development. So we've, we've had that to some degree for a long time, right?
Yeah.
Um, HB eleven ten will also require us to allow middle housing. Um, four units per lot within a half mile of high capacity transit, which is the light rail station. Um, so we'll be doing that in the coming year. Um.
Okay. So, so go ahead.
I mean, I think we've, we've done and we will be doing a lot to continue to focus most new development close to light rail and bus service. Um.
So maybe we don't have to be as timid with the wording of this thing in the future. We can make it actually say what it was meant to say.
Yeah, and I think when we do get to the point of having to do the climate element, um, there's some really specific guidance there about reducing vehicle miles traveled and reducing greenhouse gas emissions that will likely push us even more in that direction. So I think, I think the state level laws and guidance is really pushing towards transit oriented development, whether or not that specific bill passed this year, you know?
Yeah, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Allison and Carolyn, I, I would second uh, or third uh, your comments about the basis for that. And I think um, Adam's concern and Victor's questions are well taken, but twenty six point six point one is really basic language going back to the fundamentals and uh, very beginning of GMA. And that is you want to concentrate people where you already have the facilities and infrastructure to support them rather than expanding and encroaching on the uh, uh, the rural areas and that's the core of GMA. And so that language simply reflects that. It's not terribly relevant here on Mercer Island, but it is, it is on a um, somewhat of a, a important level because we want to concentrate the people where we have the resources to serve them via transportation and via uh, utilities, water, power, uh, sewer. So that's really what that is addressed to. I, I don't think, I mean, I, I understand Adam's concern, but I don't think, um, you know, we're looking at a uh, uh, problem of uh, utility corridors for high tension lines on the island. Um, but I mean, we could make that language uh, more robust and more inclusive, but I don't see any reason to start micromanaging this thing and rewriting this thing.
Adam.
Um, yeah, just one thought that came as um, Commissioner Boatson was talking and kind of also to Chair Murphy's point, maybe we insert something here talking specifying that hell, this is like any necessary or mandated development that might pull it closer to the, um, you know, the, what, what, you know, the new laws that are being, that have been passed versus I want to put another wireless facility in the park. So just, just a thought.
Uh, I think that would be directly contrary to GMA. That'd be my opinion. To narrow it that way. Carolyn.
I think, um, I agree with Mike that it would be uh, narrow, it would be probably contrary to the GMA to try to make that kind of narrow statement, but I think, um, maybe more importantly, it would probably deny the fact that we're already doing this, you know, Mercer Island has been doing this without maybe necessarily having a, you know, a heavy requirement to do so. We, we've been doing that, you know, with, um, residential development in the, in the town center. So I don't think it would be quite accurate really to say that it's only when it's required. So.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I guess I'm just baffled or confused about what we're doing here. I mean, I really thought we were going to talk about the structure of all these different pieces and not try to work out the actual policies until down the road. And I mean, if we want to go through these things thing by thing, I mean, I have things to say about all these things and I guess I'm just not sure if that's really what probably want to spend our time, you know, and the bigger issue, I guess I'm inclined toward having the separate element. You know, if we're gonna have to have one in twenty nineteen, Carolyn makes the point that maybe we wouldn't, but you know, to get started on it, I, you know, I do think the dispersment ideas is important, but I don't know if there can be cross references or whatever, but I think staff time, you know, just may not be available to, to do it, but uh, from an efficiency point of view. You know, if we're gonna start to monkey around with moving things around, why not get into the structure we're gonna be stuck with down the road? So that's, that was only my point on on sort of the bigger picture of, of how we organize these things.
Uh, Victor.
Um, I'm gonna echo what, what uh, Commissioner Gels just said. Um, I, I remain unclear as to what's being asked of us tonight. I think the Vice Chair also raised that issue as well. Um, you know, this could go in a number of directions and I think it would be great to put, to take a step back and just put some guardrails on this conversation and just understand kind of what's being asked tonight.
Yeah, that was kind of the point, Victor, of my original suggestion.
I thi- I think there's, I think there's four of us that, that have now said it. And so, um, you know, the, this has the potential for becoming a very late night if we don't, if we're not specific on what we're here to accomplish. So I, I, I guess I would um, ask that, that we, we get a little bit crisp before we move on because otherwise we've got a very, very broad target and we could go a number of directions.
Yeah, I, I, it is, it is really totally inappropriate, I think, for us to start micromanaging and redrafting and revising these goals and policies and the climate change elements. Uh, I just, we're not prepared for that. We don't have the background. And uh, I think that's way outside of the scope of today's business.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, really what I was looking for is the direction on the separate element versus the dispersed and how do we want to deal with that right now? And then I think maybe like some general feedback about what's there now and like, are there things that we could consolidate or are there pieces that are redundant with the climate action plan that we don't need to keep? Um, and then I will take that and draft, you know, whether it's a standalone element or it's gonna stay in the land use element, I'll draft something and then we can look at that later. And that would be the time when if we need to do more of the wordsmithing or specific feedback, we can either do that in writing in advance or at the meeting. Um, but yeah, I was not intending to get into the into the wordsmithing and the specifics of the language tonight.
Yeah, um, Allison, let's, let's get back for a minute to this broader issue of standalone versus dispersal, dispersment. Um, you know, we've identified a couple of elements in the comp plan that have some climate related statements. Um, but is it fair to say that each element of the comp plan does not have its own language regarding climate?
Yeah, I mean, I think they all, each element probably touches on it a little bit in some way. Um, but most of them don't have like a set of goals or like these are about climate. Um, but you know, the transportation element has language about trying to promote the use of transit and walking and biking and things like that, which obviously are good for reducing emissions. Um, but they're not in like a section that's like, here's the climate goals and policies.
Yeah, that, that's my concern about the dispersment approach is that we end up having to write separate policies, goals, uh, in each one of the elements and you know, I think that's a lot of work uh, versus having a centralized, um, uh, piece that can be referred to or can refer to those other elements. Carolyn.
Um, you know, the reason those other elements don't have climate policy in them, it's because they never went through a process of working on climate policies for those elements. But I do think, you know, we've got this new climate action plan, which uh, does take a look at the whole breadth of the city's um, functions and the communities, um, uh, actions in relation to climate change. And so using that to look backwards for what is missing in various elements and just including, you know, three or four high level policies in each one of those elements. There's only like six elements in the comp plan. They've got till two thousand twenty nine to do it. So I, I do think that it would be not too tough to go back and put those elements or those, those policies in the elements that where they're missing right now. They have them in capital facilities already. We have them in land use. So, um.
Victor.
Um, I'll say, um, I sup- uh, Chair Murphy, I, I, I support your comments for more centralization versus dispersal. Um, I think, and Allison, uh, this is, this is really a question for you. In a dispersal model, doesn't that put more work on the staff? Because as changes are made, it increases the number of places where those changes have to be made. So for instance, if there's an update, um, and I also believe that in doing so, it probably also raises the, the chance of um, a mistake uh, and an inconsistency in, in the policies as a result. Is that correct?
I think that's true. It's definitely a more complex approach as far as, you know, you do have to look in a lot of different places to see all this information and track how it's all fitting together. Um, and yeah, like updating in twenty eight, twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine, when we need to comply with eleven eighty one. It would require updating all of those elements, whether it's five or seven, whichever elements we decide need to incorporate these climate policies, they would all need to be updated. Um, versus if it's you know, a standalone element would mainly be that one. Maybe there would be a few other places we would need to make there, make sure things are consistent. Um. Yeah. So I think, you know, on the front end of creating it and updating it, it's easier to have it in one place. And then like I said before, I think maybe on the backend of using the plan, once it's adopted, there could be some advantages to the dispersed model and just how different staff around the city look at it.
Carolyn.
If we um, make a priority of trying to put it in one place to make it easier to update the comp plan as a priority, I don't think that priority is as high as having these things located where they will be useful to people thinking about what to do about climate. So I think, I think we would do, it would be sort of a short sighted thing to do. Also, given that having to have a climate element is a new thing. I mean, we might have a little work to do, you know. I mean, we might have a little work to do, you know, prior to twenty twenty nine to. Make sure we have broad based. Climate policies in the elements where we need to have them. But once those broad based policies are in place. They don't need to be updated every time you do something new with climate, the thing you update is the Climate Action Plan. So I really think we should continue to. Think a little more globally, make sure that our. Comp plan has the policies where they're needed. Use the new climate plan to inspire us. To look back at the comp plan and see where where those policies might be missing, a lot of the good ones are already there, most of them are there. Um, and then go from there, we have till twenty twenty nine, I just don't think we should make a decision. Right now, whether to put things in. A climate element, and I do see that in our memo for tonight, it's for discussion only, not for decisions. This is a huge decision, and I really don't think. We should try to make this decision tonight, and I didn't come to meeting thinking it would be. So, um, I think the discussion is exceedingly valuable.
Any other comments on that issue? Okay. So that was one of the things we're supposed to talk about and, uh. You're, I guess, Allison, you're hearing, uh, there is a difference of opinion.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um. Yeah, I'm not sure what to do with that, I think. Maybe what that leads me to is for now I will leave things in the land use element. And. Look for. Maybe more clearly identifying where. There might be gaps of things that are in the cap that aren't, don't have a policy guidance in the comp plan somewhere, um. And then also looking for redundancies or conflicts that would need to be resolved. And I will prepare a draft. That would address those items for your review um in March. So I guess now my question is, do we want to keep going through, I think I've got a couple more slides. Going through the rest of the existing policies. And comparing them with the cap. And then. I think if there's. Again, like general thoughts on like, definitely keep this or we don't need this one, I'd love to hear that, so it'll help me with the drafting. Okay, so I think where we left off was twenty six point six point two. And I was saying. That one is pretty well represented in the cap under the Building Energy Strategy One. And then. Twenty six point six point three, encouraging the use of carbon efficient building materials. Um, there's a specific goal. Under, it's kind of oddly placed in my opinion, but under the Consumption Section, um, and Action Two Point Four that. Specifically. I mean, it's, it's a bit more detailed than what's written here, but it's essentially the same exact thing, encouraging. Low carbon building materials. And then for twenty six point six point four, mitigating urban heat island effects by expanding tree canopy and vegetation cover. Um. Natural Systems, I did think what NS meant, Natural Systems One. Specifically, um, has a couple of actions related to this. So there's a very clear tie with that one. Um. And then twenty six point seven. Renewable power generation. Again, there's a couple of strategies under BE one that relate to this, like encouraging solar and encouraging, um. Purchasing green power. So again, I think that's got a pretty good connection in terms of like higher level goal and specific strategies.
Victor, do you have a question?
I do. So is is the purpose to go back to the question that we discussed about five minutes ago? Is the purpose of going through the rest of these to decide? Whether they remain in the Climate Action Plan or whether they belong here in the comp plan, is that?
We're not gonna change the Climate Action Plan, so my question is.
Understood, understood.
They belong here, um, are they hitting at the right level, should they be? Maybe higher level in some cases, or do we feel like the higher level policy is already here and we don't need this? Specific sub policy, for example, um. That's the kind of direction I'm looking for right now is like. They're good, they could be deleted, they should be edited to be higher level, they should be edited to say something different, like. That prior one we were talking about that needs to be more specific.
Doesn't that, doesn't that go back to the question of? Philosophically, are we in a dispersal model or a centralized model?
I think regardless of how, whether we do this centralized or dispersed, I still have these same questions about. What are the goals and policies that need to be in the comp plan to support the cap? And, you know, we have a mishmash of stuff there right now. You know, is that hitting the right level, is that hitting the right topics, are there things missing?
Carolyn.
I think that it's worth going through these slides to see. If we see uh policies that are. You know, worded poorly, or I I don't think that we have closed ourselves off at this point. To the idea that some of these policies, the language should perhaps be amended. Uh, or there might be one or two that shouldn't be there at all, but. No, I I think we, I think that's all still open right now, so I I think going through this discussion is, you know, worth it, and I I like to hear what Allison came up with.
Okay, well, let's forge ahead.
Think I already, yeah, I already talked about these two, they had to do with the top of that last slide. Um, we're really almost to the end, I promise, um, I think, yeah, this is the last one. So Goal twenty eight. This one's pretty high level, adapt to and mitigate local climate change impacts. Um, twenty eight point one is prioritize the prevention of climate change. Interestingly, this is another one that's, doesn't it exactly appear in the Climate Action Plan, I think. The Climate Action Plan, since it's a newer document, I think it kind of assumes that we can't prevent climate change, climate change is already happening. And so it takes more of a stance of. Reducing the effects of climate change and adapting to the impacts. Um, so I don't know, I felt like maybe that prevention is a little bit. Of old language, and that might be something to, the commission might have feedback on if that should be updated or broadened.
Carolyn.
Um, just to offer the conversation at the time when we we recommended this particular policy is, we just felt that, um. In the sequence of priorities. To to not just adapt, we said, well, keep in. The front of mind to do things to prevent it from getting worse, so that's all that meant. I think, I think it's of some value for that reason, but.
Okay, Chris.
I think prevention seems like the wrong message, I mean, minimization of climate change to. To uh do every prioritize trying to prevent further climate change, you know, but something that indicates that, uh. Sort of along as Carolyn said, you know, we're not just adapting, but we're trying to do something constructive, but. Prevention is not within any of our powers right now.
Okay, well, I'll I'll look at ways to. Massage that wording a little. Um, okay. Twenty eight point two, develop an adaptive response to expected climate change impacts on on the community. Um. The natural and the community. Response, natural systems and communities' response sections of the Climate Action Plan. Are basically a detailed strategy to do just that. Um, it looks at ways to both, you know, create resilient systems that can. Continue to function and support the community through climate change, and also looking at ways to. Adapt and manage the impacts on people and on the community. Um, so I think that's a very good. You know, example of having the right level policy there that's backed up with a lot of actions. Um. This one is similar to one that was on the last slide about the heat island effect. But this one's talking about carbon sequestration, so increase carbon sequestration through expanding tree canopy and vegetation cover. Um, and again, that gets picked up under Natural Systems One, um, I think it talks about. Just like more generally addressing impacts from heat and sequestering carbon with. By increasing the tree canopy. So I don't know, I mean, because this tree canopy concept comes up a couple times, maybe there's a way to consolidate that, but maybe it's fine the way it is too. Um, okay, so that was the end of my kind of going between the two documents and trying to compare and contrast. This slide we've mostly already talked about, um. Yeah, we did already talk about this, so I think where we're at with it is. We have kind of a split opinion on how to manage or. The dispersed versus the um centralized. Climate policies, and I think for now, I'll keep them in the land use element. Um, we can talk more about this. At the next meeting, maybe, give people a chance to think it over a little more. Um. Carolyn.
Um, I was really, uh, took note of the second bullet that it looks like they're going to be willing to accept. Either a separate element or dispersed, so that gives us the choice, we don't have to do it one way or the other.
It is just a choice, um, I I haven't delved into all the details of the guidance, but I did read close enough to understand that. They do allow either approach, and I think the legislation. Specifically recognize that some cities want to take this dispersed approach.
Uh, Chris.
And now looking at the second element, I think I'm perfectly fine with dispersed, you know, it seems like. That's where people are interested, I take the point that, you know, it's where people are gonna be looking for something about, you know, element A, element B, element C, so. And I think it might make a lot of sense just to keep it dispersed if uh if that complies with what we're required to do in twenty twenty nine.
Angie.
Uh. I think from a perspective of today and today's conversation, uh, I am in support of leaving these elements dispersed throughout. Because I do think it would be most supportive to users who are applying these on a day to day basis. Um, if if I, what I gather is the city didn't plan to. Go through the cap and redisperse across all of the elements during this update, that they're gonna have to do it again. Um. Later, then if we don't have to, if the city doesn't have time to do the work now. Um, you know, I can understand and be supportive of that, but I do think actually dispersed makes a lot more sense just from a user perspective, even if it does create a little bit more work.
Okay, um. So I think I've got good enough direction on where to go with that, I think that. I was planning to loop back and just. See if there's general feedback on how we want to manage the. Are there things that are redundant or? Duplicative with the cap that we feel it could be removed, are there things that? We feel are not hitting the level right now that we want to try to elevate? Um. Yeah, is there feedback on those topics?
Okay, Carolyn.
You're on mute.
Uh, I'm sorry, I I don't have feedback on that question right now, I have something in my mind that I wanted to say about the previous thing, if I may. Um. You know, while I have made the point that I think that dispersing these policies in the elements where they relate to how people do things that work in that. Particular aspect of city government. Um, I think we should also always keep in mind that the average. City worker who's trying to figure out what climate's telling them to do, they're gonna go to that Climate Action Plan. So, um, that thing will likely be updated every so often. Uh, but less update of those, you know, gold standard sort of policies that are, you know, in the in the comp plan.
Angie.
Um. Given the amount of work the city has to do. Uh, I guess I'm inclined to just encourage looking for where there are conflicts. Not necessarily redundancies, while it's nice to have everything like clean and tidy and not have too many things in different places, um. I think it's more, I I think we want to make sure we're just flagging, gosh, there's a conflict in language between these things that need to be, needs to be resolved so that. Uh, we can minimize challenges to interpretation and precedence, if you will, um, but I I'm not sure that do. Duplicate duplication, excuse me, is the highest and best use of time and energy right now, that's just my thought, willing to. Be wrong or change my mind.
Chris.
I like the concept that we talked, was spoken about at the early about, you know, the comp plan having the high level. Policy and, you know, the more, you know, nitty gritty is in the in the Climate Action Plan, so. You know, I mean, you know, to the extent that you, while you're drafting this and you see things, I think you should feel, I'd love to see. Proposals from you to say, hey, this is a place where I think we can go to a higher level. In the comp plan, and I would encourage you to give us that opportunity, I think it's, I feel it's gonna be hard for me at this point in this context to. Give you specific guidance, but uh I encourage you in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah, one thing I noticed in the uh building and energy portion, looking at the chart and then looking at the. Cap versus uh the comp plan is that the comp plan in that area has actually got. Some greater detail on certain key issues, so we don't want to lose sight of the fact that. The comp plan being more land use oriented in the first place. Um, does have some very specific things that we don't want to. Lose sight of by moving to such a high level that we're we're losing those things because they're not in the the Climate Action Plan. Um, the one, one most notable one is the. Twenty one point one, eliminate regulatory and bear administrative barriers where feasible. To residential rebuilding, which I think is. Very important and, uh, you know, and creating those incentives, uh, in twenty one point two and. And really, the Climate Action Plan doesn't go into that, so we need to be careful. That we're not just looking for inconsistencies, but we're making sure that the the important items are captured. Any further thoughts? Seeing uh no hands, uh, Allison, you wanna move on to your next? Item.
That's all I have for this item, actually, so we can conclude this discussion.
Okay. Uh, is there a deputy director report beyond what you've done?
There's really not, since Adam already went over the schedule earlier in the meeting, um, I don't have anything further to share tonight.
Okay, um. I know it's probably a little too quick to ask this about planned absences, given we've just been, uh, recently. Told what our schedule is, but uh if anyone has some, uh, it'd be good to know now, Chris.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in Europe from April twenty eighth through May twenty third, so uh, sort of runs across like four meetings. And, you know, I, it's not impossible, I could do something from there, but I think it is three or four in the morning, so. Could be a little rough.
Well, that's a, that's a small price to pay.
It could be, if I have the internet and cannot disturb my lovely wife, I would uh certainly consider it.
Okay, anyone else? All right. So our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty seventh at six P M. So our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty seventh at six P M. Uh, there being no further, no other business, oh, Angie.
Well, I did see on a slide that March twentieth was noted, um. As a possibility, so are we? Is that a pencil? Or I I know Allison said, don't use Sharpies.
I think the March dates are. More more solid, I think the twentieth is likely to be the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, there being no other business to come before the Planning Commission, the time is now. Seven fifty four P M and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder to the commissioners, please stay online until the staff has terminated the broadcast. Thank you for joining us and uh, thank you all for the good discussion.